If you read through it, the biggest thing is you have to 2027 to adopt it.
Yeah, yes. I thought, I thought some of it goes into effect, I thought September.
The law itself, from the state perspective, goes to effect 90 days after they sign or the Senate approves. So you have to like early September, state law. But the towns aren't obligated to adopt it until 2027. So what my suggest was going to be put it on a normal roll of ordinance changes coming up for next June.
Okay.
That way we have some time to kind of see what's going on with it.
Yeah.
You know, it's going to change.
Well, you think about how fast this, you think about how fast these things are coming now down the road. And I don't think we've even worked out the ADU thing and we're already changing subdivision. My question with that is, which I have to ask the attorney, I guess, is if you look at the state definition of subdivision law, you probably know this, but it refers to anything that's a dwelling, a lot, or rental as a dwelling for residential purposes. So now this law is only looking at it from five or less dwellings, not lots.
Right.
So how does that interact with the state statute for subdivision definition? Are they changing that statute because the subdivision definition is three or more constitutes a subdivision?
Yeah.
So does this go into the subdivision definition? I don't know how, I want to see the end result, you know, the final, final.
The net of that authority in the, in the hands of the LPI, right?
Christina, has the select board come to you or the town manager with regards to starting anything on the comprehensive plan?
I believe they were speaking about it at the select board meeting. We've gotten one vote from Chief Cog, but the select board would like for him to open it up for bid. So to see what else we could get.
Okay. So well, to this end, we don't know. If we got another two years, I would think within a year, we'd have a comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, it depends on, well, we had this kind of conversation with the town manager. It depends on what you want your comp plan to do because you have the base for your comp plan now. Are you just updating that information or are you going to go full dump the box out and restart over? If you do that, most communities I work in, it's more than a two-year process. It's a very long process. It's better off, from my standpoint, to kind of update and modify as you need.
Yeah. Especially if the state's going to continue with these.
Well, I think it depends on what the town wants to do for the comprehensive plan. You can say you want to do this thing.
Right.
But if you do your surveys and they all come back and say, do that thing.
Exactly.
Then, so that's why I was asking for that, how much energy do you put into?
And then to your point, who is ultimately driving the bus? Is it the selectmen, is the steering committee, is the comp committee? Who's ultimately responsible and what's the charge with whoever is charged?
Usually it's, the last time it was a committee, I believe.
Yeah, but still it has to be brought forward.
I, I get that.
And you know where that goes, you know, so.
Well, that's why you.
But yeah, I mean, usually there's, because I mean, to your point, there's going to be funding set aside to do that.
I think we're all set, ready to rock and roll as soon as, as soon as they correct the result.
There are outside consultants that do that. There's North Star is one that I'm aware of, out of, they're up at Pine Land. And then maybe another one down in York County that does some of that as well.
They brought up one that they just did.
The Cog, the GEC Cog.
Yeah.
But a lot of them just, you know, like I said, a lot of them really do the guidance of the document and let the committee do its thing. And then they update the old document, bring it forward, and then you make modifications to the committee going forward. Based on your surveys and updated data, because a lot of your data is going to change now too. Your, your last one is what, how many years old?
Twenty something.
Yeah, so all your, all your local data is going to be way out there.
Robbie is the same.
Your zoning.
Yeah, you can use the same.
Right, zoning, your, your rules and regulations, your knowledge, your impacts, the schools, your, all that thing for them.
So it's, the legislation talks about growth areas.
Right, designated growth areas.
Designated growth areas.
And that's the other thing, you know, what do we have designated growth areas?
Do we have designated growth areas in the town?
I think it's a coverage area.
I don't think you do, but that's what comes out of the comp plan.
I'm going to look at it, but I think it's in the figure.
I thought it was. Yeah, I thought that's.
It defines, usually it defines a growth area, again, you want it, you know, you call your village your growth area.
You could, you could ask Paul that, but that, because he worked extensively on it. But I think that was the idea that by your lot size, you'd more or less determine the village.
You get a lot size and some special provisions for concentrating.
Right.
So those growth areas may be outdated.
Exactly. Or you may want to expand it beyond the village. Change your zoning, right? Make transition zoning, if you mean rural and village, maybe you want to resell it there or something, you know. But it just takes so much time. And it's tough, it's tough because you've got to keep a committee together.
Together.
That's the hardest part, to keep the committee together.
Well, I don't know much about it, but.
Did you not pick it up yet?
It must be out there.
Did you, did you see the bylaws, the amendment to the bylaws that we had to sign? Did you get that?
I just signed it.
I signed it, yeah.
You already signed it?
It's just a good new policy thing.
Yes.
My first response to David McCaughan's review running about the comp plan. Select board discussed with the town manager last week. Having a presentation that's coming week on the 15th by the comp about the comprehensive.
What, what was he here for a couple of weeks ago?
He was there a while ago.
Well, just a couple of weeks ago now, yeah. But he made a presentation at the time.
Yeah.
And they're really wanting him to make a presentation, not just in the general concept, but specific to significant.
Not specific, like there are like the specific kinds of monies, right?
That's true.
Or was it just an overview of what cog does, GEC cog does?
Well, it was an overview of what cog does relative to a comp plan, so prior presentation.
So the other thing back to the growth, or it's the other thing to most, a lot of communities put in growth, which you don't have yet, maybe in the future you will, is where, again, you have public water supply, public sewer, where it can handle that growth density. Here, obviously, you're limited by septic and water. So maybe that's why it's never been put in previously, we don't know.
And I was talking to Mike, who runs the Jewish camp. And he says that, you know, they're able to have a water system of their own that can support that camp, right? Several hundred people. So it's not impossible for there to be some sort of a water system.
Because a lot of towns do allow.
Uh, Mike.
Okay, let's call it.
A lot of rules are written that you have to have what they call a centralized septic or centralized water system. Which to Paul's point means that you have a licensed well or water supply that feeds more than a certain number of people over a certain period of time. Or you have an engineered septic system.
So if this was all going to kick in and you were going to have these multi-dwelling units on a single water supply, wouldn't you require the water, then approve the water supply prior to building the, the multi?
Well, we always, you have that luxury in the subdivision board, that's it. You can request water quality verification. But under this, it doesn't go through subdivision. But what you could possibly trigger is if you had five dwelling units, it may fall under what they call a transient water system. Where it's on one well.
Right.
Which has to be registered with the state, has to be tested, and you have to provide water testing results to the state.
So you'd, so you'd have to put that in prior to building the structure?
Yeah, before you get an occupancy, you'd have to provide the state that evidence that you've done that.
Okay, so you wouldn't necessarily have to put that in prior to building the building, but you would have to do it before you get an occupancy, right?
Because like, for instance, a lot of condominium, social condominium projects have that, so they're on a public water.
Yes.
They're on a well, so they usually have to have a tank or some kind of distribution system because of the volume or the pressures they have to have. Those have to be pre-registered with the state. Pre-registered.
It'd be interesting if you could tie a monitoring system in to that certain location, that kind of, you know, the deemed, you know.
Paul, like, I worked with the town of Casco on Point Sevago. That has a big distribution system, it's got multiple septic systems up there. And they have meter, flow meters and everything else, so they know what they produce. What's interesting is when they came in, we found they had one or two days where their usage went off the charts. So we don't know why or how, like, it was always around the Fourth of July.
Oh.
But it would be skyrocketing, it would be way, way up. And I don't know, just because the occupancy per, you know, all the cameras and everything that's in there. But it would spike, it would be this abnormality, it would spike usage. To the most part, it was pretty low.
Yeah.
But you could, I mean, most of those distribution systems do have some kind of monitoring device. It's not that difficult to put a flow meter on, something like that.
Right, I was thinking more along, along the lines of testing the water, you know, monitoring the quality of the water.
Well, like I said, they have zoo animals.
Yeah.
Paul, Paul, Sid, you know, it's going to be nice to check, I think.
It's a transient water system up to a certain number of occupants. Then it goes to a different level of public water supply. So when, I think when you go over 25, it goes to like a, really like a, not like the Port One district, but it goes to another public water system with testing and protocol higher term. So the more users you have, you go to these certain stages.
So who's, who's able to access that information? The town be able to access that information, or is that just state?
Good question. Definitely states, I don't know if there's public information at that point or not.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm thinking of monitoring, some sort of a monitoring program.
But, I mean, like Point Sevago, technically, they're supposed to provide annual reports to the town. Now, do they do it? There's nobody forces them to do it, but you know, but they're supposed to, under their agreement with the town, is supposed to provide annual records.
Right.
Like a monthly, I think they get, I think, with their flow meter, something that a month is put out of spreadsheet.
Yeah, you know, semi-annual testing or something, high and low water testing.
And actually, they, their, their water up there.
This is what we wanted to take up during the workshop, right?
Yes.
That's crazy, but water case, water case test and water quality for us.
That's what I wanted for this, that's what I think that you guys really missed out on.
There is a small system down by town beans, but there's maybe a half a dozen, six or seven.
You going over some of this or you could put it on the side because you don't do anything to me.
Yeah, so, so did you?
Survey?
Can I talk about surveys right now?
What survey?
For like the shoreline, like we talked about non-conformity.
Oh, yes, please.
Do we want to discuss this, or just in general terms?
I think for just general terms, like, I guess the only thing you want to discuss is, you know, what do you want to know going forward? When do you want to approach this? I think David's brought up concerns of making sure we're compatible with the comp plan. Get that, when do you want to take this up? But we've got time, if you want to do it, 2026, we have time. We don't need to get into it right now, but do you want to put it on our list for 2026 and study it? Or do you want to, do you want to get some more feedback on where the comp plan's going before you adopt it?
So, so if you were to adjust your ordinances, you have to do it prior to 2027? Or can, or do you have to do it prior to the end of this year thing?
No, you can, you don't have to adopt this ordinance until 2027.
Well, they, they talk about, you can't, don't they talk in here about you can't make ordinances that like circumvent this or?
Right, you can't make ordinances circumvent it. So, I mean, you can kind of backwards. Usually the town could have things that are more restrictive, but they kind of worded this one a little differently. I don't know whether we want to have, I mean, obviously, Pretty Flaherty provided us some, some good things here.
Yeah.
I don't think we should invest too much time and energy until the state gets it active. But this is, working with the state for years, this is their first little thing.
I would think the towns, I would think the towns would, would have, have people come, come together.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, I don't know if, again, I don't know what the funding is, but maybe we have, again, it's not official law yet till September. But maybe Pretty Flaherty or whoever represents the town, where, because they always review our ordinances anyway, have them come in and advise us what to do, or advise the town manager, the right course of action to undertake.
But want to work in conjunction with some of the other towns?
Well, I, yeah, I guess, yeah, that's the other thing, what are other towns doing, how are they adopting this? And then if we're working on a comp plan, chicken egg, right? Which, which should we be focused on first? And should we be trying to make sure that the comp plan complies to this and put in the ordinance? Or wait for the comp plan to put in the ordinance? You know?
So now, so, so I guess we're having to have to.
Because the comp plan is not an ordinance, it's just a guide.
That's right.
So I mean, if this is law, and it's going to be state law, to me, like I said, I would probably put it in 2026. Try to work on this over the winter, adopt, so it's ready to go in 2026.
Survey's out, there's a public opinion, and get some response.
Get some feedback over the winter on this thing. And if, if it becomes convoluted, well, you could always park it and wait till 2027. But if, you know, we realize everybody else seems to be working this through, we'll just adopt it in 2026 and we can be ahead of the curve. But I think like the other LD, 2000.
2003?
Three, there's going to be questions that come out of this.
Yeah.
Mike, who is our original question as a basis for the survey? And also include, you know, this is 10 years ago, and you think over the last whatever period, the town is going in a, you know, positive manner based on the old ordinance or?
Well, the other thing is, if you look at that sheet there, I mean, we're, we're still going to have, to your point, I still ask questions, how does this match up with septic loading, lot minimization? Because one of these things, I saw here that the town couldn't, the town couldn't.
Put four units on a single family housing lot?
Specifically prohibits municipal housing from holding a certificate of occupancy for waste or wastewater discharge after receipt of written verification from the local plumbing inspector.
Right.
So, I mean, they got this ambiguous language there. And again, you know, you got to have, if you had five dwelling, four dwelling units on 20,000 square foot lot, you wouldn't need the septic load.
And now they've dropped the lot size down, what, 5,000?
Only if you have public water, or public water or centralized water.
Jeez.
But you can't adopt dimensions requirements that are below the state law.
But our current, our current setbacks and everything would still be in effect.
Right, yep. And the other one was, uh, the other one is ADU may now have attached to a multifamily.
Yes.
As well, so not just single family, multifamily.
Right, I'm solving that.
So, I mean, I, and then fire sprinklers are not required for ADUs unless they're attached to a structure containing three or more dwelling units. So I mean, all these things would have to be kind of purged into the.
Why did they put that in there?
Three.
But why didn't they want a sprinkler system? I mean, if you've got a multi.
Guessing they're looking at rural areas where sprinklers are expensive and then trying to make these affordable. This is what the whole purpose of this thing is, to get affordable housing. So, you know, you put a sprinkler system in, it adds up to $12,000 right there.
Yeah. Yeah, they're trying to populate the state, I guess.
One other is no, Christina and I have faced a lot in all these different applications recently, is non-conformity lots, non-conforming lots, and then lots in the shoreline zone where we have non-conformity or setback issues. While it's not explicitly called out in the ordinance, I think when we had those situations, we need to put some language in there going forward that requires a boundary survey. We just don't know what the non-conformities are. If we don't have the property survey, how do we know the non-conformities and the setbacks in precision? You got lot coverage issues, you need to know the lot area, you know, percentage of the lot coverage. You need to know setback from a resource or from the property line. And then the non-conformity, it's already a reduced lot. So the scale and everything fitting on that is, is tight.
So that would just be on non-conforming lots?
Non-conforming lots, and I don't know what we want to do, because we face so many issues with shoreline zoning plots.
At least, at least the GPs should have that.
Yeah, great point. Because it's just, things are so tight with everybody in those areas that everything's just super complicated, like the ones you'll see tonight.
And so in theory, you'd be able to put these multifamily units on those too, right?
Uh, I don't know if it applies.
Did they grant that?
Oh, sorry, I can't.
The multifamily, this new, I don't think it applies to shoreline zones.
No, this, this law doesn't apply to shoreline zone, they still have to meet all the other requirements.
So with regard to the survey, I don't disagree with it, but let's say you've got, let's use Long Beach. And you've got four stakes, four stakes, four stakes, four stakes, all right? And what if all neighbors agreed and not David that these were the stakes? I don't know, is that a consideration issue for anybody?
I still think we need a plan that would show those dimensions. Maybe it's not a formal boundary, maybe we create some kind of language, some kind of surveys needed. We need some kind of field survey, just so we understand what those dimensions are.
What's the difference between a survey and a field survey?
A field survey, it depends on the degree of certification by the survey. Because you can do a mortgage survey, which we have adopted as, which they, to your point, they go out and they say, here's the pin, here's the pin, here's the pin. This looks good to go.
Yeah.
But they're not reading the deeds, they're not verifying those pins are set in the right location.
Right, is what you say it is.
Yeah, and sometimes they don't.
Um, there's a suggestion that maybe we could do the applications for all these and ask the board if it's meeting.
Oh, at your pre-application meeting, you could say, this is what you need, A, B, C, D. And amongst that could be, considering you're a non-conforming lot, we refer you bring a survey with you. Thank you. Well, then that's, we question that, great idea. The only question would be just how do we word that in ordinance so that you have that ability to request?
Request of the planning board, right? The pre-application meeting, how it needs to be written in the ordinance.
Well, I think you got to put it in the requirements for the site plan or whatever we're doing. And again, it can be worded so that the board can make the decision at a workshop.
Right, the ordinance.
The public just needs to know that expectation going in, that's all, that they could require a local survey.
And the board has the ability to waive any of that, anyway, so.
Right, but maybe that's the way you go, you say it is required, you can waive it if you have other sufficient evidence.
Just have your checklist.
Well, that's, ultimately, that's getting into like these things we're doing tonight. Christina and I would like to be able to create these type of non-conforming or these small shoreline zoning replacement, good formal checklist, so if they have it done, saves you time, saves us time, because it feels bad that some of the people are coming back two or three times. It's three or four months and, you know.
I mean, for them, if you do those.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough.
Anything else anybody wants to talk about this workshop?
Yeah, what happened to the, the process chart we were going to put up on the wall? Do you know that?
What was on the wall?
The process chart.
Oh, we were going to do a.
The steps.
The steps, I think we kind of parked that because we got caught up in some of these other things, but we should bring that back as well.
Yeah, yeah, they had an example, it was very close.
Yeah, we did, we had, we had a whole flow chart, yeah. So that's a big, yeah, maybe next workshop, we can bring that back to life and look at that.
Okay. So what was your intent to do with this application, Christina?
So there's two applications that Garrett's been working on, one was for, for the practical extent and non-conforming lots that we were hoping you guys would review over the next couple of weeks and get you back on. Same thing with the subdivisions, went through the ordinance and just put together an application using that as a guide. And again, maybe get some feedback next couple of weeks.
Do we have copies for everybody?
I think you all got copies.
Everybody got copies?
Of the colors. You know, one of the key ones in that I really liked is photos.
Yeah. There's a lot of what?
Is there a requirement, the requirement for some photos of the lot?
Oh.
I mean.
Yeah, it's totally nice because then you get a better picture of what you've got.
Yeah, that's good.
Are we getting a drone?
I don't know, but I'm getting a TV screen here that you guys can actually see, so.
Tina, this is what that, this is.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's how much I'm.
But I mean, the pictures, how are we talking about?
Christina prepared, she's going to send me a copy, and I'm going to go through it as well. We kind of went through it.
Makes sense.
So we'll review this and discuss it at the next workshop?
Yeah, the next meeting.
Meeting.
People to get the information together.
Yeah, okay.
Between this and that checklist, more of a checklist.
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
Right. It's ridiculous.
Although I'm missing my piece.
Christina, you'd like, you'd like feedback before the next meeting, right?
Um, no, no, no workshop.
Oh, okay.
I, I was going to ask if we could schedule a workshop in the next two weeks.
Oh, yeah. In the next year?
In, just to give you a demonstration.
And he should do that.
Yeah.
There.
Um, Jim, are we still going to do the work, do you want to ask for a workshop?
Yeah, you want to do it. When you want to do workshop, do I do it before the next planning meeting, or do I do something in time?
About the, everything.
Oh, everything, okay. You're going to start at five.
Yeah, that makes sense.
He needs one and a half an hour.
Yeah, so I said I can start at five.
Well, let's, let's set an agenda on it and work down the agenda. I don't care what time we start, but let's make sure we have an agenda for the works.
Well, we'll technically schedule it for five, if it's okay with the board. We'll try to put together an agenda of items that we want to cover.
Okay.
Regular scheduled meeting, you want to start at five?
Well, the regular meeting on me isn't the August.
Oh, on the August meeting?
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Starting at five on the August.
Was the intent to talk about those?
Uh, we're going to.
Appreciation of.
We had an applicant who wanted, wanted to discuss some stuff, right? Carly.
Which one?
One, just tell me, before the meeting.
Oh, yes, uh, yeah, it would be August.
So August, okay, sorry. It's August.
Okay, yes, all right. All right, so, so we'll schedule, what would the date be?
The 12th.
The 12th, yeah. Anyone want to schedule that for five?
We'll start at five.
And what?
We got a month as well.
I'll have to look. I think I, I think I have out every week. Don't necessarily need me with my, I mean.
Schedule to give it on the other meeting.
Okay. Let's start the meeting here, we'll close the, close the workshop meeting and we will open up our originally scheduled meeting.
We haven't got a public hearing yet.
What's that?
We haven't got a public hearing.
Oh, yes, we have a public hearing. So, welcome to the July 8th, 2025 Planning Board meeting for the town of Sevago. I like to call the speaking order, take a roll call. Paul Laurent, I mean, yeah, Paul White.
President.
Tina Van Ness here, David McCarthy.
Here.
Robert Lavovity here, David Welch, here. We acknowledge the town staff president, Christina Robinson, town CEO, Jim Seymour, town planner, and Gary Jones, executive secretary. So we will open up the public hearing for.
Is Mr. Kimble here?
David Kimble.
Yeah, he's not here, he knows he needs to come, so.
Do we want to, do we want to wait?
Yeah, we want to move it along and.
Make a motion, we pause on this project and move it to later in the meeting.
Okay. Somebody make a motion, that, that motion, Paul?
I made a motion.
Second, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so, um, we will, please hear. Okay, so this is a public proceeding, you're at a public hearing at this point. Unless the planning board specifically boasts they're going to executive session, anyone here has the right to hear. the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all exhibits or materials that are present. Please notify the chairman. If you are unable to see or hear, the board works on a published agenda, which is available tonight by the sign-up sheet. And we will move on to appointments of the chairperson and vice chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Bob Libberty for chairperson for the next year.
Okay, I would, I would second that. I would second that. Any discussion? Yes.
I would like to, I would like to have a, I don't think any one of the three of you have the experience to run the board, to conduct the board. You've worked your tail off to make it happen, David. I don't take anything away from you, okay? But you don't have, and Bob, I don't think you do either, have the experience with parliamentary procedure in being able to conduct a meeting so that you, so that you know what the procedures are. It's different having it printed in black and white and being able to handle that in a conversation as things are moving on. I would like to see somebody that has experience doing it and has, and Cog does with his legal background. And he has, he has helped you, David, on many occasions this past year as things have, making suggestions on what you might do to get things back along with this at this point.
I, I personally think that everybody ought to have an opportunity to serve as chairperson. I think it's, you know, a great opportunity for a person to enhance themselves and to study the ordinances and the procedures. And I think everybody should, and you're right, we all should help that person along as they need it. I mean, this is, this is how things operate. I don't think that any one person should, 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 you know, serve as the chairman for any length of time, any great period of time, because, you know, it's, you kind of get set in your ways and you may not be open to other people's suggestions. So, so that's, that's my take on it, and that's, that's why I would be in favor of letting Bob take over the championship, because.
What's important is the responsibility of this board is a big responsibility. Not everybody has the skill set. And that's, that's not putting anybody down. You either have the skill set to be a leader and the experience behind you to be able to move this board forward. We have to regain our reputation, David. Our reputation right now is not the greatest by far. We're working at it. We're working at it.
The chairman is just one member of the five-member body. I mean, you know, all you're doing is facilitating a meeting. It's.
But if, if you can't facilitate a meeting, it, things get lost. And we don't follow procedure, we went through a whole checklist, the last meeting or the meeting before, and we never made a motion to pass it.
What was that?
I can't remember what was it.
This gentleman's project down on Hog Fat.
Okay. The wrong way through that, we went through a whole checklist.
The project on Hog Fat?
Yeah, you went through the whole list and you never voted to accept it. Normally you go through the list and you vote each item. That's how we used to do it.
No, the, the, the application was not deemed, it wasn't, wasn't complete.
I'm going to move questions to you.
Yeah, okay, move the question.
Excuse me, David, Bob, would you be doing that?
All right, so we have. Do you have anything else to say, anything to?
I think it is important to look at the chairmanship of a board that has the responsibility that we have not to be passed around and take turns doing it. It's somebody with a skill set to be able to hold the meeting together and to keep us moving forward and not get lost in the conversation. I get lost in the conversation, we all do.
I don't, I don't know where you're coming, coming with.
It's all right.
So I guess the question, so right now we've got a motion.
Yes.
The nomination.
We have a second.
We have a second? Do we have a second?
We have, we have.
Okay, we have a second.
We have a second. We've had discussions. Is there any further discussion?
And does somebody else want to make another nomination?
No, we have a discussion on this nomination going on right now.
Anybody else want, have anything they want to say? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Opposed?
Paul? Nothing personal, Bob.
You can give it a try. I think you might have found out that it's not quite as easy as you think it is, and there are some pitfalls you've fallen into. But yeah, I have no objection to a rotating chair if it's being done. I'll leave it at that.
So are you abstaining or are you voting?
What's the vote? Put it to vote. Are you going to vote, Bob?
Three in favor, one opposed.
Three in favor, one opposed, and you are the final.
But I mean, this is a perfect example. Jim's now running the meeting.
Jim's not running. I mean, I just asked a question. Is, is Paul going to vote? Very simple.
You voted what, three in favor?
There's three in favor, there's one opposed, and you haven't voted yet.
I will abstain. You don't like that because my name has been mentioned, and sometimes the best thing to do is say, you have your three votes, good luck with your championship, and move forward.
Well, once, once again, I think that this board ought to, ought to work together. I mean, I don't think there should be any animosity whatsoever here. I think we should all work together, all help each other out, and all help the town out.
That's, that's what I've done, sir. And I don't have any animosity. It's the same concern that I have had, is getting the meeting conducted reasonably in an appropriate amount of time. You've taken my input, which has helped us stay on track, and that's fine. Let's continue as we have.
I don't believe any animosity towards Bob, or to you. I mean, I'm just stating what I think is fact.
I'm expecting everyone to help and stay on track, actually.
We did that.
Is that votes done?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate David Welch for vice chairperson.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So we can move forward with the meeting. Do you want to?
I would, well, no, this evening, I'm not fully prepared to take this on right now. So I'm going to ask David if he would to, to run the meeting this evening. Or if you come back next time, I'll be ready.
Does, does anybody, does anybody object to that?
Mr. Chairperson, I can't hear and concentrate with his comments from the audience. He and the code enforcement officer have this private conversation during all the meetings, and I'm getting tired of it.
What's the rest of the board's thought on that?
On what?
Bob, it's totally unprepared.
Conduct a meeting, there's a couple of very simple items on the agenda that should not take us very long.
There you go. So what do you think, David? What's your thoughts?
If Bob wants to defer, I'm fine with him deferring.
I don't have any problem with you being either chairman or vice chairman and taking the meeting tonight. So why don't we move forward?
Okay.
He asked for a favor, so.
All right. So we will move forward. Is there any correspondence? No, everybody.
Well, we got some correspondence. We've got a couple of emails from the code enforcement officer. We got one from, I have two from the planner, one from the code enforcement officer regarding applications that they wanted us to hear, and that should be public. All of our stuff should be done. All of our information should be coming two weeks beforehand so that we can schedule our meetings. And if it isn't, then we need to make sure that the public knows about it, at least, at the minimum.
Yes. So there was correspondence with two people who are thinking about an application? Is that, that's the correspondence that we're talking about?
I would like to ask that you move that other discussion to the end of the meeting so that we can move on with the regularly scheduled business that's on the agenda.
Okay.
So we go back and start with Mr. Kimball, who's here.
He's not here.
He's not here yet.
He's not here yet.
Oh, he's not here?
Mr. Martini is here.
I thought it was this gentleman.
Mr. Martini.
Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss the correspondence at the end of the meeting, then, if that's all right with everybody. Do we, do we want to vote on that? Somebody want to make a motion that we do that?
I make a motion that we put correspondence to the end of the meeting.
All in favor? Okay, so we'll move the correspondence to the end of the meeting. Okay, so we're going to review the minutes to June 11th, 2025. Would somebody like a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes in the, what was it, June 11th meeting?
June 11th, yes. Second?
Second.
Second, eight seconds. Any, anybody willing to say anything? All in favor? Unanimous? The, we had a site walk, and we had site walk minutes, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the site walk minutes?
I didn't give any notes.
Site walk minutes.
We did site walk for Hog Fat Hill and 711 Anderson Road.
Yes.
We did that last, in the last night.
Oh, we did, okay. All right, okay, sorry, my mistake. Okay, so now we will open the public, open the public questions. Does anybody have any questions not related to an application? Seeing none?
That would be the island that I asked you to move to the end of the meeting.
Correspondence.
Thank you, we get correspondence. You said you wanted to move it to the end of the meeting.
Right, he brought up his correspondence, but he came as people who wanted to ask questions unrelated to an application. I gave you a heads up on what they were. So what the correspondence was from me, but the discussion is from them.
So now do we want to?
I'm fine either way at the end of the meeting.
Let's go through the regular items first.
Okay. All right, own business. Map 10, Lot 29-C, 47 Hog Fat Hill, application for proposed construction of business-related storage use for a proposed garage. Mr. Kimball is not here.
So David, we were going to whip off in the public hearing and then take this up after.
Take Mr. Martini first.
Mr. Martini is Hog Fat Hill.
Going to take Mr. Martini is Nathan's Beach.
Yep.
Right, Nathan's Beach.
So we will move on to map 29, Lot 52, 24 Nathan Beach Road, pre-application meeting for proposed demolition of two structures and the construction of a new garage on a non-conforming lot. Is the applicant here? Would you like to make a presentation?
This is what was the.
I'm Don Martini. Think the presentation, probably I'll have a copy of, but in a simple overview, my application is to remove a non-conforming structure, remove another structure in, just because I don't need it, and then construct within the conforming rectangle garage, 2236 garage. So the ultimate building will be conformal.
Yes. Nina, the lot itself is non-conforming. The lot itself is non-conforming, yes. It's a shoreline. But the construction is proposed outside of the 100-foot buffer.
All the construction and demolition and earth activities are outside the 100-foot buffer.
So the main camp will remain.
Yeah.
And the camp number two will go down, shed number one will go down.
Correct.
To be replaced by construction.
All right, gotcha. I, I have a question. It says on your plan that the owner of record is Pinnacle Peak LLC?
Yes.
Is, is that you? The, the application, I think, should have reflected that, but. And the other, the other thing is, I don't see a driveway on here.
Boat storage shed, so I don't.
Well, I don't see a driveway to the, to the property.
Oh, it's just people park on the grass. There is no driveway. There's a right way in front of it. I think that shows. There's no.
Can you park on the right of way?
No, we park on the grass.
They park on the grass.
Beside, beside that, what's called.
There's no requirement for a driveway?
I don't think those places, I don't know if you've ever been down there.
No, I haven't been down there.
The road is right, the beach is, the water's here, beach, road, and then the camps are right within 10 feet of the road.
Oh, yeah.
So everybody just kind of pulls into their.
Just pulls in on the grass or whatever's there?
Yeah, nobody has a driveway.
Okay.
There's no modification to that, so.
Yeah, okay. No, I just, I just thought I'd bring it up. It's.
So the garage is out back. You tend to drive around back from time to time, is that what it is?
No, just for boat storage.
Boat storage.
Just for kayaks.
Twice a year, I hope.
Okay, yeah.
Why do you well on this property?
It'd be, I think it's marked.
Has, have you, have you deemed the application complete, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, the well is to the left of the, if you're standing on the beach, to the left of the main house of 300.
Way back.
Thought you put a point on there.
It seems propane.
It's not, it's a, it's not a stand-up well. It's underground.
It's not in the footprint of where we're operating and it's existing, so.
It's not shown.
Just not shown, but I mean, it's not being altered or the structure's not in the location of that well, so.
The, the entrance to the structure, left side, right side?
Proposed?
Yeah.
Would be the southeast side. As you look at it, it would be the left side, the short one.
So the septic, septic system's new? New septic system? No, that's just the location of the existing?
It's just existing of the 10.
Okay, all right.
And where this is in the footprint of the existing camp and shed doesn't, doesn't change any of the septic.
Does the board want to move forward, says?
Well, we need to know if there's anything else we feel we need to get a complete application. Rest of that to Mr. Timor. The only thing I'd mention is the wells.
The well, the well location would be ideal, and if they have an HGG 200, it may be the location of the actual septic system. The tank, the tank's on here, but not the system on. I don't know if there's a.
Want to locate the leach field?
Well, would you have a copy of that?
Of the HGG 200?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I don't have, maybe I do.
Again, we're not altering anything, but I think on the final plan, it would be useful to know.
Well, can I get those?
It's not adding to the, to the, is that what you're adding, asking, sorry, bedrooms?
No, no, it's just the location of it. So for constructability, they just know not to drive over it or locate where it's at.
Because the building is larger than the existing structures.
It is, slightly, but it's not outside the footprint of those two combined.
Okay.
Really any accessory apartment or anything above the.
No, just storage.
Precedent project.
Deeded right of way along Nathan's Beach Road?
I'm sorry?
Is there a deeded right of way along Nathan's Beach Road? Is there?
Yes.
But it's on the deed. I don't know if I have a copy of the deed. Perhaps it's.
So we would like a copy of the deed, Paul?
Yeah, that shows that right of way.
And location of the well?
And the well and the septic, and that'll.
Okay, so proceed from this point.
Okay, so proceed from this point.
Oh, septic system.
Are we gonna send him a list of what we want?
Well, those will be three things, I thought.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm saying, I'm asking Christine.
Yeah.
Anything else, do you need my location?
If she has a copy of the septic design, you can call enforcement officer. If she doesn't?
I, I, yeah, I can look for it. I do have the location of the septic, I just.
I just had it done by an engineer, because I didn't know where it was.
Okay.
So I have a, something from an engineer that showed the word, so.
Well, if you would bring that up.
So there's a note on the drawing two on the left side, it says, uh, planned reference, uh, shown right of way width of 20 feet for Naismes Beach Road. However, deeds in chain of Martini Lot do not specify width for the right of way.
It's just servicing a one-family place?
Yes.
So you still want the deed, or?
I just still like to mention that we're approving a chain, we need to show basic things, access, water, septic, and those are the three basic things I can pick up.
Any special drainage around cabin or whatever, no?
Just all sand.
All sand.
Okay. Alright, so we want to, uh, place, place Mr. Martini on the agenda?
You need to decide whether you want a site walk and a public hearing.
What do you think?
It's up to you guys, I'm just measuring those.
Site walk, public hearing?
I'm gonna make a motion that neither a site walk nor a public hearing are needed.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? No site walk, no public hearing?
All fees are paid?
Please, yeah, go, Garrett.
Alright, all fees are paid?
Yes, Mr. Martinez.
We need to place it on the next meeting, and this is free application, and then the next meeting would be a vote on the application, and unless other information was needed, you could probably vote on the final approach.
Do you have any questions?
Can we have the minute, the agenda to show that we will vote on the application and, um, and the project itself as two separate line items?
Well.
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
So, so here, here's what I, see, you know, we have something in here that says this, and it's, you know, it will say, "Application completion meeting," right? And, okay, but we're not saying that we're actually gonna make a decision on that, so people should know that.
It's completed, we accept it as complete, then we can.
We can move on.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, the next, next meeting would be submission of the application to the town planner, um, and that, that's, I'm assuming that's already been done. Um, then planning board completeness determination, vote to commence substantive review, and then a final decision. That's the order, the order of the next meeting.
And the three, the three things you requested were a copy of the deed, the location of the well, and septic location?
Yes, septic, especially the septic design, the whole design.
Yeah.
Well, Paul, did you want to see that right of way?
Just to confirm that it's there, it doesn't necessarily need to be shown, you don't need to use a map.
Yeah, there's a note on the drawing from the surveyor that he's identified Naismes Beach Road as it exists because it's not, the width is not defined in the deed. So the deed will just correspond, we'll just reference that, but.
Don't be saying something as simple as, "Right of way across Naismes."
Yeah, he just made an assumption of 20 feet wide for, for location purposes, but, uh, deed won't say anything, just let people know, so, hopefully we can get a copy of it.
And the beach, beach isn't included in the 20 foot site calculation, man?
No.
No. Alright, so let's see, when, uh, that would be, uh, what is that, August 12th, next meeting?
Yep.
So you're all, it all set for, uh, for August 12th? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you know.
Mr. Kimball, does he know who you're supposed to be?
He's, I don't know if he has no matches, so I hope he would be here, so I'm not sure. And he knows, he said that his letters notice, because he knows he needs to be here, so I'm not sure what happened.
You went in here for that public hearing, for any person attending that public hearing? That's enough. I don't, I don't like addressing the, uh, any project in the absence of the person, so.
Just one thing, the correspondence piece down, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put them off to the very, very end, and it doesn't show, and maybe you'll resent it.
We didn't have any correspondence, really, correct?
Well, it was correspondence.
The two, we could vote that we held a public, I don't know, I don't put people off, but you haven't had it.
We haven't, Dad, he's not here, I don't believe you have it.
Go ahead. Right, because he represents himself, right?
Right. So we can discuss the correspondence at this point, I guess?
I mean, can we define, to me, I thought correspondence meant people writing in.
That's, that's what this is.
There wasn't any.
Yeah, there was, it was on email, it's not on your bag?
But wait, no, wait a minute. That, that was the code enforcement officer and the town planner giving us information for the, that they hadn't got to us for the meeting. That's not technically correspondence, that's.
Well, it was correspondence, it corresponds in that, in that they wanted to come before the board, um, and, and, and ask questions, so. Right?
Yeah.
Can we, can we, um, speak to Mr. Mr. Akers, Mr. Akers, I'm sorry. Can we talk to him about, um, this project, please?
How's the board feel on that?
If he has anything he wants to say, sure.
Well, it's not on the agenda, that's all.
Right, correct. So, and they're aware that they run the risk of the board deciding that it does not want to take action because the materials weren't in, or you can, again, I feel that this has been a third time, potentially the third time, to visit the board, you've held a public hearing, you've held a site walk, they're responding to comments, so, that's my opinion, obviously, we also can have something different, but, um, I think we just let them have their moment, and you can discuss.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Anything, David?
Good. My side in my piece.
Yeah, Paul?
He's had two weeks to get it in.
Um, okay, the, the, I, I guess, four out of five, the board's fine with it, so. We didn't take a formal vote on it, but.
Do they need to take a poll?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we let the gentleman speak and have to say, can I?
He can speak, and they'll decide what they want to do afterwards.
Okay, Paul, you got a second?
Yeah, we don't know what the guy's gonna say, so I'm like, it's a mystery thing, so.
Let's, all in favor? All in favor? Just unanimous, okay?
We just listen, don't shoot it.
Uh, welcome back to the morning, Mr. Akers. I work with, uh, Tom Manny, the home Christian, representing Chris and Ari, the co- of the co-op, 711 Naismes. So last meeting, we were asked to do a drainage plan and, uh, some, just to discuss a little bit of road controls and plantings, so we've been working back and forth with, uh, we had every intent to try to get it in within two weeks, uh, the original submissions, we did, but it wasn't sufficient, so we kept working with planners and the code enforcement officer to get the details we needed. Now we have a complete set of, uh, plans that seem to be working, it seems to work well with the, for the planner and the code enforcement officer. And so if you want, we can go over that in a little bit, but, um, that's kind of where we are, um, on the project, so we should have everything that we believe is at this point, to Mr. of the town. So we had a, I can, uh, pin this up here, this is, I don't know if you guys have this one, I can leave one here, full size, for you folks. So we're asked to put a drainage plan together, and, uh, and we, so we were able to capture a lot of those points, and we got a, an underground curtain drain, if you will, at the top side of the driveway, kind of control some water that would potentially run down the driveway, uh, so we kind of, we're gonna be putting that in the top side that would come back up into the driveway, and then shed down over the property, uh, down through the natural soils, down into this area, so when it runs down over the driveway, there will be a riprap, type material, uh, and for the water to shed into, we draw them in engineering design on this, these specs for that detail.
So you're gonna take out the existing pavement on the horse?
Yeah, so that pavement will be existing all the way up, up to this point, but we're gonna cut this here, all this is being removed, you know, the soils will be, you know, reworked, this is where, if you, folks remember, we were doing, we were putting the septic tank, they have to run a new, uh, force line out of it to the property. So that driveway has to come up anyway, because we're actually gonna be elevating it, it's part of the reason why some of this, to the drainage plan and kind of understanding the structure, that's what we did, uh, to kind of get this slow.
So what takes the place of the driveway?
What takes the place of the driveway?
Is that gonna be like crushed down or something?
No, no, the driveway's gonna be to put back as asphalt, it's the end of it, it's the way the drainage, how that is, to take care of the water that runs down off the asphalt. There's, that's the drainage plan is what has been developed around the end of the toe, the slope, if you will. So that's what all this is indicating right around here, so the water will shed into that, and seep into the ground, if, so it doesn't just run across the top of the, the ground into the lake.
So the water from the steep slope is diverted to the driveway and then into the riprap?
Yes. Yes, into the riprap, then, on the upside of the house, north side, if you will, it's shed around and then just kind of trickles down through that, and what this is indicating here.
What happens with the water that comes up against the back of the house and then to, to the, in between the driveway and the house?
That's a great question. There's a, there's another one of those drainage systems that's put up against the back side of the house, which is all ledge there, so we're filling that in to bring that up to elevating the house, that'll dump back out on top, around by the open porch, where it's inside the entry of the house, so that will trickle down and then run down the driveway into that.
Okay, so there, so there won't be any water scouring out that, that area in between the corner of the house and the driveway then?
No, other than, you know, heavy, heavy downforce, nobody can control that, but, you know, typical rainstorms that you would get, that's a decent design.
Yeah, would, would it, I, I mean, this is just a question, but would it make any sense to put crushed stone or something in there to kind of pick up any of those?
Well, we're getting up against, probably put crushed stone, and they're up against their numbers.
Uh, okay.
They did, and I'm, we're, we're maxed.
22.
They're maxed, they're maxed, the max, the match.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I didn't understand that.
But that's what's taking so much time, between you back and forth.
Well, the back and forth was just making sure everything was done sufficient enough for the plan to have accurate information and to see.
So right now, they have a number of percentage of coverage of non-vegetative surface.
Okay, now I get it, yeah. So then, you, you think that, that whole, whole design's gonna work, alright, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's much better.
I wish you could have been on the sidewalk.
I saw the pictures.
Oh, you did, okay.
I have seen pictures of that.
Yeah, alright.
So ski jump, but maybe.
You're satisfied with it, Christine?
Yes.
I think the fact, and the other thing, we had them plant some, uh, blueberry bushes down below the riprap slope to add some additional vegetation between the toe of that slope, but, I'm sure.
Have you done away, I haven't seen that, so, still can't see it, but have you done away with the hydrant for the fire department?
So I, I was in contact with the chief, we tried to connect with him multiple different times, and he hasn't yet to respond. He did respond on the first time I called him, I guess he dives, trying to get his work gotten away, apparently, and I, you made it up just like.
As, as, knowing, looking at that driveway, I just don't even think it's a good application for that.
I don't think it'll work, because if you remember correctly, the one we did on the boat?
Yeah.
One ramp, they had a limitation of how much they could pull, and this is substantially higher than that elevation ones, to pull to get it to a point, and the grade is even steeper, so, I mean, you gotta get it up to Anderson Road with the hydrant. So, you're pulling up probably twice as high as you were down on the boat ramp, I just don't see the feasibility of being able to.
Yeah, I don't either, because you don't know if the cars, if somebody's gonna have cars parked there, you know, if they could get to the water, it seems to me it would be a practical thing, but.
Is the, is the intended barrier to stop cars from going?
Yeah, there's actually a little, little, little barrier that they, kind of safety barrier, that he's indicated here for us to have it up, you know, garden.
Well, that, you just don't want to use it to other things up the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, they won't be able to access that. Right now, it's, they can get to it pretty easy. They won't when we're done, because by the time it's built, as you can see, it's sloped here, two to one, so, coming fairly steep on the back side. They won't be that, I mean, they.
I don't understand why they're saying that there's so little access to water now in Anderson Road, because as we were driving back up past Phil Lowe's house, coming up this way, they were, it seems as though people would, for their own safety, would want to put something in, and it's not that high a draw.
Yeah.
At, down at this end of the, at this end of the road.
I, I, I don't think the application depended on that though.
It's not, no, it isn't, but I'm saying, it.
Yeah, I know, I had the same conversation with the chief, and he was, I think it's just both timing and everything, I think that's probably why he, he probably didn't respond back, after the several different attempts to be trying to get him to come up, just to, but, see, even the order doesn't want to have hydrant there, so, if it was just something that they were gonna be able to go and draw hose in, she'd be cool with that, but, then, she doesn't want to see a hydrant. Like, I mean, at the road, it'd be the best spot for that, but again, the elevation doesn't work.
But just the constructability, that's gonna tear everything up, you're gonna go to the ledge, you're gonna.
Yeah, it's a long, it's very basic.
That's right.
Alright, so that's, that's probably about as far as we can go with this, this evening.
Again, it's up to you, I mean.
Can we not waive this and let this, them finish going through?
My concern is it wasn't on the agenda, is, is that, is that a problem?
We can waive that.
I don't know if we can waive it, I don't think we can waive it, but that's.
Why? It wasn't on the agenda, this is also supposed to be in front and in the public. Yeah.
This is a minor thing, you have to do.
But you have to, we, we just procedurally, you know, you don't, I know, I know, it's a pain in the butt, but, uh.
Well, can make a.
It's just gonna max stuff up.
Compromise here.
There's one?
Compromise?
Compromise, these folks have been waiting three months.
Seriously?
Is there a possibility, Christine and I had also talked about maybe a, a date later in this month, because we've got a bunch of these little projects starting to pile up, maybe we do the workshop on two weeks out, and then put them on for final act of the workshop. So we moved the workshop from the 12th of August up to the 27th, put them on, it, it's up to the board, I'm just throwing out for something.
How's the board feel about that?
I wouldn't have any problem voting for the project tonight, the question is whether we have to have it listed on the, on the agenda as something we'll address.
Right.
And that's kind of where we were at too, is, I realize it's putting the board out there, but again, I, I think that's why going forward in the future, we've gotta find a way to Tina's point, to consolidate these smaller things into shorter windows.
This isn't, okay, my point of view is that it's not a new project, it's an adjustment to something that's already been approved.
Did we, did we formally approve the project?
Anybody?
Did we formally approve the project? No. No.
Okay, no. I think, I'm, I'm fine with the two weeks out, I, I don't know how, how everybody else feels, like, you know?
The sooner the better.
I don't want to do two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks is.
I don't, it's summer vacation.
You don't want to do it?
No.
No.
He had, he had enough time, he said he had enough time to get his paperwork in.
We did make an attempt, I did get it at time, it just wasn't enough information, kept adding more stuff to it. So, and the other thing too, I feel like, we, we got, you know, town taxpayers too that have things in mind, you gotta remember, we're getting out of the building season, gonna be getting to a point where you're just pushing the project further and further down the road.
We didn't push it down the road, we didn't push it down.
I'm just, I'm just one step. I'm, you guys, I understand, you guys are up against a hard thing, I get all that, but again, remember, three months, nine, four months, you don't even know if you're gonna make a decision at that point, so it's, I'm just, yeah, I just.
You'd be making decisions tonight if you were on the agenda.
Right, right. That's, that's the thing, it's.
No, I had, like I said, I had, I had it in time, it wasn't fully accurate to what they needed.
We have a.
We added some things, I had a drainage plan, that wasn't, wasn't good.
We had some errors in the computations.
Yeah.
So they were, so I did.
So you voted on something that had errors in it, you know, so to catch 22 for all of us.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize it was on the agenda until just recently, so that was another thing, I almost thought we were.
We can make a special, have you got several other things that you, you need us to look at?
We have a lot of things that are starting to come through.
Okay, so if we put it out.
Are they gonna be formally?
There are a lot like this.
The application meetings?
If you want them to be, they can.
Yeah, I think they're gonna be pre-application meetings, so again, if we could get them moving forward, because again, construction season's short here, but I, it's not all our fault, but it is a short season.
But we also have a responsibility to the public. We are their board.
Yeah.
And if we have to make some adjustments in our meetings to accommodate that.
Well, I think we're looking at it on the side of protecting the public, because it was on the agenda, somebody, who knows? I don't think anybody would complain, but who knows? We just don't know.
Well, I guess, was there anybody here, my, kind of my theory was, nobody was here to.
But I am okay that day.
So there was no public comment, public hearing, so.
Yeah.
That was kind of my thought process.
This is where it comes into me, again, maybe with common sense and try to accommodate what needs to be done. That's, that's where I'm coming from. I, I'm in a public servant my entire life.
Well, I think you'd have to adjust, adjust the requirements to, you know, to fit that design, but, you know, 'cause I look, 'cause now it's, it's, it's supposed to be on the agenda, you know, you can't just.
And I'm not gonna change you guys' minds if I go to hell.
No, I, you know, I.
I'm just saying, as public servants, we have a responsibility to the people at this time to help them get to where they need to go. He tried to do what he was supposed to do, there was some miscalculations and whatever, and it's too bad they put him off another month.
It is too bad, but I, I don't know what.
We can meet, we can have an earlier meeting, two weeks, two weeks out, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think if we could, if we could, I know, one board member's.
I just don't wanna make that a regular thing, you know?
It doesn't, only it doesn't.
So, so I, I would be in favor of having a, helping you out.
I wouldn't say just for him, I, I think we've got other things that we, we can have some other pre-applications to help move those along as well. So it's not just him, I think we feel that we've got enough that we need to start kind of, we're gonna have a stack of the pre-applications is what we're afraid of.
Okay.
So we'd like to do some pre-application workshop, since we're doing that, we just formally put him on the agenda to make the final appointment.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Do we have enough time to do that? Do we have enough time to do that, to make all your postings and notifications?
Oh, yeah, right.
Well, it's not a public hearing, so it's just.
Yeah, we just need.
She means seven days, right?
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, two weeks, two weeks for that point?
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
Make a motion, we have a meeting in two weeks.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second at six o'clock.
Twenty-second.
Okay. It's July 22nd.
At what time?
Seven twenty-two, what time we wanna do it?
Well, you can do the, you can schedule this for 6:00 PM, if you wanna do the workshop, we can start at 5:00 PM for the workshop, and then we want some time.
Okay. You're gonna have your workshop now and on the month.
Right.
Well, we may have to.
We may have to, I don't know, who knows? We'll see what the results are on that workshop.
Right, what's coming up, just the same sorts of things?
Same sorts of things, yeah. We get a lot of questions about the non-conformity requirements for shoreline zoning, all switch outs of residents to, you know, new residents and things just like these we've seen.
But that's what they sent, that's what, David called the correspondence, that was the information.
They're not easy, they're never easy, they're always complicated, so.
I just don't wanna make this a regular thing, you know?
David, you may have to sometimes, I mean, not regular, every month, no.
My whole, my whole point here is, we got a long winter here, people's gotta, you know, prepare for stuff.
That's.
You're a public servant, David. You are a public servant.
Public nature, unfortunately, I, I deal with it in my line of work too.
You get paid, we don't, we're public servants and we have.
I will say this, 'cause I'm in it every day, just like you folks are, they don't think of that stuff.
Nope, they don't.
They're, I can tell you when they come up here, 'cause they don't live here, and if people come up here to build, they have that short window. We get, we get hammered with people, and we're trying to fit everybody in, this little window, they're not gonna be planning stuff in the wintertime, they don't even think about spending.
They're thinking about it.
So, I, I would love that, if they would come up in the wintertime and say, let's load up for this summertime, right, but doesn't work. It just doesn't, nobody thinks of that stuff until the last minute, but can get going to it.
They have no idea.
I have no idea what we have to go through.
They have no clue.
I have no idea. And I, again, I appreciate all you folks, I understand how hard it is, and the commitment that you wait to the plan, what to the town, it's, 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 you know, hands down amazing, and I applaud you for that, and just a big, you gotta deal with a lot of stuff from the public, and it's a hard job, and I really appreciate what you guys do. I just wish it could be a little easier for all of us to understand all of our things, 'cause there is times where it varies so much in what we need, and, so just understanding some of that stuff for, for us as builders and moving forward, it's, every town's different, and it is crazy, what you gotta go through with every town, everyone's different, what they call it for, what they ask for, so, I give it all, and I understand, I just wanted to say, I just appreciate you guys, so, thank you if you're kind of concerned moving in for.
All right, so we'll, we'll see you on the 22nd then.
Wanna make a vote on that?
Yeah, make a motion.
I'm not enthusiastic, I feel like David does, but if you guys wanna go ahead, we'll do it.
Yeah.
We feel it would help move the agenda along.
Socials.
Pre-application, meetings probably aren't gonna amount to too much, but it goes to the issue we had another month with it, but, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we have a meeting on the 22nd, 5:00 will be a workshop, 6:00 will be taking up issues.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we'll see you on the 22nd.
Would you like to drink coffee? I can leave it, I had it straight.
I think we, we all have a coffee, that's something.
I'd like a big coffee. Oh, you have a, sure. I have no problem.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna ask the call.
Yes.
Person, something? Are you gonna contact Mr. Kimball and tell, he could send his notices out again, right? His notifications?
I don't know, he may have to, I mean, he has to come back so you guys can.
Right, I don't know if we have enough time for the public hearing notification.
Maybe he's on the 22nd, you can set him up a date for a new public hearing.
Not, not the 22nd, but for our next monthly meeting?
You'll have to be on August.
He has to be here, he can set it with him.
August 12th.
Oh, he would?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause his public notifications and this is a longer.
Have to do it again.
Yeah, he has to do it again.
So you, you can't contact him and say, hey, you need to do this again?
How, is that?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to say, the board would have to take a motion that postpones the public hearing because the representative is not here to present the project, and then we just put him on another month, and he'd have to re-notify the public hearing, unfortunately.
Can I ask? The notice is on the applicant.
Yeah.
And his, he is not here.
Right.
So we'll take up his business when he can come here.
And, so we can't, we can't talk about this at all tonight?
I believe that a person should be present. Somebody needs to represent the project.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause I had, I had a couple of questions, but I'll have to wait, that's all.
Exactly, that's part of it.
Well, how about if we make a motion to tentatively schedule a public hearing for our August meeting?
Boy.
And.
He's gotta agree to it, I think.
Well, all I'm trying to do is give him the opportunity to do it.
Was anything wrong with the tentative, it leaves an opening for you to, for him to hit, if he can't, then he has to wait till September.
Do you want him to come on the 22nd so that he can just confirm?
No, I think he's just a correspond, I think he just has correspondence on the 22nd that he can, that he'll be here. Well, actually, we'll have to know that before that.
Yeah, so he's gonna re-notify people.
He has to re-notify people.
Yeah, because it's public news.
Well, that's why I was worried, David, is that we're signing him up for, you know, for re-notification with a.
Well, no, no, well, again, if he's not gonna make it, he's not gonna notify people.
I have no problem, gosh, that's the only thing, and we have a motion that, for a tentative schedule of a public hearing for August 12th, we have that motion that I think anybody seconded together.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
And, and are you gonna at least reach out to him?
Yes, we have to.
Yeah.
'Cause, well, one of us has to, 'cause he wasn't here for his hearing, so we have to tell him that no decision could be made, and they had to cancel the public hearing because there was no representation.
It's funny, he emailed me this morning, I'm not sure.
Well, things happen, I don't care what you, I feel bad, but I can't wait forever.
Well, fortunately, he doesn't have that many buttons, I can say, so.
All right, so is, is there any other business?
Um, we have Peter Berlin here, and he has a question for the board.
Okay, Jill.
Come on in.
I represent people of DeSantis' Vego project, and they're both, spending a lot of money trying to lift their house and replace their foundation, and I think right now they're about three, just under four feet of foundation, and what they're trying to see, and why I'm here tonight, is to find out if there's any way that they might be able to get a little bit higher, protecting themselves from potential floods or whatever. We found some documentation from the First American Flood Data Service, and stating that that area was in a flood zone, also FEMA maps stating that it was in flood area, but we're trying to find out before they get even more invested, because they're $10,000 in, and they'd have to spend more money to go higher. They want to get a feel for how Ford feels about lifting it, so that they could have enough clearance to three and a half feet, I believe.
Is that within the shoreline zone?
It is.
It's within the 25 feet.
So that has, we don't have any say on that, do we? That's a state.
Well, that's what we've advised them, is that there's no, I don't believe there's a waiver criteria, because that's law, state law. The question is that the peak of the roof already exceeds the allowable height, and what we've told them is that they've got that height, they have to maintain that or less.
Right.
They can't go higher. They'd like to move the whole system up, higher.
You'd have to put a shallow pitch roof on it or something.
That, or, or maintain the existing foundation where it's at.
Yeah.
Replace it, but keep the same elevation. So, I mean, that's kind of it, you got a point, that you know the elevation at the peak, that's it. That's my understanding of the law, that's it, it already exceeds.
Which, which is the peak of the roof?
I guess it's a 11th ball pitch, but they weren't looking to really necessarily rip down the house and replace a roof.
This is driven by state law, that's the height requirement.
There are also bedrooms in, in.
Oh, yeah.
So even our order fields could not create a barrier.
I don't think you can.
There is an article, Article 1000, that is, it plays, that says that if a home is in a flood zone, that lifting it and raising it is plausible, so as far as being against.
So is that, can I ask one question? So if you're in a flood plain, you know the flood elevation in that flood plain, 'cause it's on Sevago, right?
Yes.
So that's a known elevation. So the question would be, the inhabitants has to be one foot above the flood plain.
Right.
So I guess the question would be, I would assume that that finished board now is one foot above the flood plain, that's the information that the board would have to have, but I don't know if there's any in Sevago or on Sevago, like, there's been a situation where they've allowed them to push it up here.
I guess they're kind of nervous, because, you know, flood plain, if your flood plain's right here, and you meet the flood plain, your, your house is not far from the flood plain, and at that type of level, it's not a very tall foundation.
But Sevago is very controlled, the height of that lake is very, very controlled.
Yes, right.
The elevation from the beach.
Let's say it's a known.
We're, we're just under, we're just below the high water mark now.
Two sixty-seven.
It's gotta be a couple of feet from the beach up to it, 'cause I live right down there.
Right, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, so, and that lake is, is very carefully controlled, they'd be opening a dam, that would never get up that high.
So your, your article?
Excuse me, David.
Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
No, I just, I'm saying, the flood plain, I, I don't have, I don't understand, what do you see the flood plain as? The water coming up from the hole in the wall?
I guess from what I understand from DEP, and I think, there's Paul that I spoke to, in DEP, he's been there for 23 years or something, he said if it's in a flood plain, then it allows for this. There was no, well, you know, if the flood plain is in, at this level, it was.
What are they, what are they describing as the flood plain? That's what I need to know.
If the home is in the flood plain, meaning if there's one inch of house in the flood plain, that then, they made an exception in Article 1000, I believe I'm saying.
Chapter 1000.
Chapter 1000, to lift the house up high.
Okay, that's not what I'm going. Christina, can you please explain to me, when they're talking about the level of water that, that we've reached the flood plain, okay, the waters?
Yeah, what you have is you have, to your point, you have.
Well, wait a minute, I just asked Christina.
No, I think he should call.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You have a set elevation, to your point, Sevago Lake has a set elevation of 100 year flood plain.
Right.
Two sixty-six point, point five.
Point five.
That's a known elevation.
Okay.
So all your FEMA and FER maps, which are your flood plain maps, should identify that elevation on a map all throughout the Sevago Lake basin, basically.
Right, okay.
So the question is, is the house in that flood plain? They're saying that if you're in a flood plain, it allows you to elevate, I assume elevate the foundation. I still don't think you can change the peak of a house where it exceeds the, the elevation.
It does make that exception for that, and that's why this law was created.
It provides that evidence.
His verification that it's in a flood plain comes through the insurance company.
And also, First National Flood Data Service.
We, yeah, we would need, to close, but we need to have.
Evidence that it's in the flood plain.
I guess that's why I'm here, so they don't have to spend a bunch more money to.
Paul, that's what I'm telling you. You need evidence that it's in the flood plain, which you say you have.
Yes, sir.
And then you need, you know, evidence that.
Do you like a copy of the documentation?
Yeah. That would allow for the amendment to Chapter 1000.
Where does the 267 foot mark come on the, on the banking of that height?
I can address what you're saying. I know exactly what you're saying. You're saying if the flood plain meets a certain level of the house, then why should you have to go higher? Because if it's below in the foundation, then, then why? Well, it's, I don't really control how DEP makes the rules, but if the house is at any level in a flood plain, then they made a special amendment to Chapter 1000 to be able to lift the house for that particular reason, that houses were taller than, than the town's ordinance.
But I think we supersede DEP in this case.
Yeah.
So it has to be in our ordinance, because the Chapter 1000 is the baseline for shoreline zoning. So if we have adopted something that allows that, that's one thing. Because the DEP may allow it, doesn't mean that we can't. So I think it's a legal interpretation here, too, that we would have to follow up with the town's attorney to see if the board or the town could allow that exception. We haven't in our shoreline zoning.
Are there, are there other properties that sit back that view the lake through that property?
No.
No?
No, so. And they would go, they would be happy to go back. But unfortunately, they got, they knew, they put in an exception system, and guess where it is? Right behind the house.
So you were saying, in insurance industry, did you mention two insurance industry studies about this?
I guess I was wrong in speaking with you. The First National Flood Data Service has a, puts it in a flood plain in FEMA. The FEMA maps puts it in AE zone. The flood zone.
It's an elevation.
Oh, okay.
AE is the elevation, which is Sevago.
So I've got First National Flood.
And as well as, I believe, I, I, I didn't have a lot of time. I tried to get here early. And it also states it in the Morgan text in the flood plain, it states it everywhere. When they bought it, I'm getting more documentation, it says it was stated there as well, so.
I don't, I did not find it in our shoreline zone. I don't know with the new flood, I don't have a copy right here, our new flood plain management ordinance that allows. But I think it would have to be paired with our ordinances. I don't know if the state supersede us in this case.
We, we adopted our flood plain ordinance in those maps, right? Those are the maps that we go by, I assume.
So you adopted Chapter 1000.
Well, we adopted the flood plain management ordinance from the state, which was junction with 1000. Our shoreline zoning ordinance is, uses Chapter 1000 as its base, but the town can go above it beyond that if it so desires. Or can the town go under that?
Go, go. He'd have to prove somehow.
Town could not go under, but it can go above.
The state somehow gives a variance.
And, and the shoreline zoning has to be approved. The town's shoreline zoning is approved by the DEP.
That would be up to him. So you'd have to provide us with some information that says that what you're proposing supersedes our town ordinances as far as the height restriction goes.
Okay, you just mentioned about that you've adopted Chapter 1000 of the DEP.
Our, our flood plain is.
Or is it?
Because we, we have, we have a height.
Did we adopt? I think the entire chapter worked out.
Our shoreline zoning is essentially Chapter 1000 with some modifications.
There's the official shoreline zoning map of Sevago. It does seem to show that everything between 114 and the pond is shoreline zoning.
But we need that flood plain mailing.
Or shoreline zoning.
I don't think we have.
Well, is that the most, is that the current map? Yeah, flood plain language. Yeah, but do we have that big map?
Yeah, was that the whole line?
How much higher will the overall structure be raised to accommodate what you desire?
Oh, we believe three and a half feet to less than three and a half. They would like to go approximately seven feet.
So the peak of the roof will have raised seven feet?
No.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Three and a half feet.
It's already up there, 25 feet.
Over 25.
Okay.
Over, oh, no, it's 20.
I believe that, I mean, we don't have confirmed numbers, but.
It was like 23.
Somewhere between 23 and 25 feet.
And in that area, it's got to be 20?
In the 25 foot water, it can't be any more than 15.
15. Here it is, right here.
The 75 foot is 25.
Does that have any maps?
So is part of the house is in, in the 15 foot? And part is in the 25 foot?
Yeah. I've had applications where they've done different tiers.
Either way, it's still, it'll exceed both.
It would exceed.
It exceeds the fireplace. Yeah. So it must really exceed the 15 then.
It's in the last three roof back.
Yeah.
There's going up, and that's like, do you have a bad luck?
So you're, you're raising the roof to that height.
Right.
Not just the chimney.
That's correct. The chimney, there's no chimney. They're taking it up.
The whole chimney up, the whole roof system is going to come up three and a half feet.
The whole house is coming in.
That, that becomes problematic for people that live on the back lot.
There's, there's nobody there.
Well, there isn't now, but would, would, is there potential for somebody building back here at all?
No. It's, it's the road, it's literally, it's about 27, 29. I'm sorry, I have the. Behind the house to the road.
It's 17 and a half.
Oh, 17 and a half feet.
That's what your survey says.
Okay. I'm sorry, I ran out of there. Hey, Adam. That's the Friday listening, I can hear for six. So 17 and a half feet to the roadway, and then you have the road. And I don't, isn't there another road behind there, or areas of residence?
One 14, and then across the street. So it's, you remember, sphere is partly across the street.
Oh, really? Okay. This may, this may be something they have to run, run through the Board of Appeals here.
Well, but I don't think Board of Appeals has the authority in shoreline zoning.
They don't, and they can't, the only thing they have authority on is administrative appeals and setbacks.
Setback your own, yeah.
So.
So the only thing I can think of is if they can provide us the documentation to Chapter 1000, the only thing I think we have is we could run it by.
The attorney.
The attorney.
Oh, the attorney.
And just see if we have any means that there's anything we can do. I don't have that authority. I, I don't see that we do, but, I mean, maybe there's a loophole that I missed. I don't know, but I don't see anything in our ordinances that allows it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the applicant would have to prove, bring all this information before us, improve their point, right? So it's up to the applicant.
Well, and I think before they go down that path, they want to clear it with the town's attorney or advisement to the town.
Yep, but who's gonna, who's gonna pay for that?
And beyond that, what, what they give their attorney to write opinion or something.
Right.
Well, it says in what section here, shoreline zoning, non-conforming structures, it says, maximum height of any structure may not be made greater than 25 feet, or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater.
Right.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. It is pretty straightforward.
So you're saying the maximum height is 25 feet.
Last of the taxes, that's all I'm doing here right now is reading some.
The stats.
Yeah. 25 feet are the height of the existing building, so if the 150 mill is 27 feet, then it's 27.
So within 25 feet of the high water mark.
We just cut it down and get the sunroof.
Paul, she, she's got something to add to that.
So that narrative that I gave you all explains this. Within 25 feet of the water, the max height is 15 feet or whatever was previously existing.
Right.
And then up to 75 feet, it's 20 feet, huh, 20 feet.
25 feet, yeah.
Or whatever was previously existing.
Right.
And you go, you see, no.
I got it.
So that's why I say the, 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 within 25 feet, that 15 foot height, that's going to be the problem, right? Because you can't, because if you raise that.
It will exceed the height requirement or the setback.
And within that Chapter 1000 you're referencing, does it have a, I, I mean, is there a limitation of how much you can exceed the height?
Existing building?
This is says, existing height.
Right.
You say there's a, there's a, under Chapter 1000, flood plain, there's a, is either thinking about something that they could lift the building out of the flood plain, but how much out of the flood plain? I mean, does that mean you can go 20 feet or one foot? What is the? Is it the state law that supersedes our ordinance and says he has a right to do this under circumstances? I don't see it in our ordinances, the way it's written.
Do you sir have an assignment?
Yeah.
Find proof.
Yes, ma'am.
That you can do it.
So if he provides the group from.
That's what I'm trying to say, is if you adopted Chapter 1000, then does that mean you adopted the amendments to Chapter 1000 as they're?
I don't know if we've referenced Chapter 1000 in our.
No, we don't, but one, Chapter 1000, Chapter 1000 is the guidance that DEP gives you to follow shoreline zoning. That is the state shoreline zoning.
I get that, but.
But we don't necessarily say we comply with Chapter 1000. We take the elements from Chapter 1000 and we put it in our own shoreline zoning.
Right. So we are not, as far as I understand it, we are not.
And that's why when we finish shoreline zoning, we give it to the state to prove DEP has to prove that we are minimalistically compliant with that Chapter 1000. But it does not mean that you can substitute one for the other.
Well, are you not substituting one for the other as part of Chapter 1000? So what you're saying is you take what, what you want from this, which is, is it the whole of, has it been altered?
It hasn't been altered.
Okay, so you took, want Chapter 1000, and, and now I'm under the impression that
You'd have to find something that's.
Nowhere in our ordinance does it reference what you're talking about.
You want to get writing.
It does not reference Chapter 1000.
Is the state shoreline zoning ordinance. The town utilized that document to develop their own shoreline zoning. It's not incorporating 1000. They use the elements of that to put in their ordinance. And then the DEP reviews that to say it meets the general standards of what they would accept for shoreline zoning. Every town has to be approved by the DEP.
Right, but I think.
But it does not mean that we incorporate every element of Chapter 1000 or change it or more.
But you mentioned that you did take all of 1000, so you didn't alter it. So we just talked about.
We altered it probably, when was the last time we should pull?
He can give you a copy of that ordinance?
So it's post built.
So, and that is what the town adopted, okay?
Right, I guess, I guess the question is, are you going to accept the article that was consigned into that law into, into consideration?
The last amendment we did with the shoreline.
Let me, let me just, so our town, in any town, can make a more conservative ordinance than what the DEP.
So, yes, I understand.
And I wasn't there when we accepted that ordinance, I think Paul was, but.
I guess the town does have, I, I do know that the town does have the state of urban water situations.
Yes, so.
As opposed to the state and town.
All I'm trying to convey to you is what Jim was saying was, we don't have anything in our ordinance. As far as I can tell, Merle is, I'm sure feverishly looking that up. Chapter 1000.
I'm previously.
Yeah, our last amendment to the shoreline zoning was January, my copy is January 30, 2024. Yeah, that's the one I have. I don't see any language that allows us to be permissive. You know what I mean, is I'm not writing something that allows us to. By all means, if you find something to, an interpretation or, again, it would have to be from your attorney to say that, yes, Sevago shoreline zoning allows you to do this, X, Y, Z.
Yeah. Either, either that or you got to shoot up the height of the roof. If you want to raise, raise the foundation up, you got to shoot up the height of the roof.
Merle has a point.
Really, it's just a form of, pretty much the thought process from having. But in reading this, first of all, I don't know whether one authority is a shoreline zoning ordinance species. However, basically, the flood ordinance says it prevail, and this is my voice of someone, it prevails if it's more conservative than the town's ordinance.
Anyways.
Right. However, if the town's ordinance is more conservative, then the town's ordinance prevails over the flood ordinance. That's pretty much what's up. So if you want to put, raise the foundation, you got to lower the roof.
Or keep the roof the same.
Or keep the roof the, well, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm saying lower the roof. Whatever you raise the foundation up, you've got to lower the roof.
Now, is that the highest part of the roof?
Right.
Yes. Well, it's the Christina's interpretation.
Unless it's only 24 feet, then you can subject.
I told, I told the lawyer, two by four on the top of the roof. And a cupola doesn't count, because we already talked about that.
So you have the answer, you go like a foot?
Yeah, for much now.
Yeah.
Unless, unless you find some legal parameters that, you know, you want to run by the town's attorney, but it would be on your dollar, you decide.
Let, let's be clear, we are not saying no.
Right.
All right. You, you came here seeking what other information you may need to make this happen, correct?
Right, and you told me that, and you proved that it's in a flood plain.
Okay, I just want to, again, make sure that this is not a planning board decision that we're telling you no or that you need to do this or do that.
We, we're just giving you our interpretation of the ordinance.
I'm under the impression that I did prove that was in a flood plain, it wouldn't matter, because you don't adopt all of Chapter 1000 in some parts, and in other parts, you adapt all of Chapter 1000, if that makes sense.
Right, we've cut based in, you're correct in what you're saying.
Yeah, but ultimately, to your point, DEP does approve us to be in compliance with shoreline zoning statutes.
Well, would the board consider accepting the amendment to Chapter 1000?
That would have to go through our litigants' changes, which only happen typically.
Yeah, that's town meeting.
The town meeting. It'd be, that'd have to be voted on by the town for an amendment to the ordinance. And that would happen until June, you know, I was six June, right, and here.
Well, so that's, that process would inquire a lot, probably you to write up that ordinance and it can get approved by working with them, and then come to the planning board, then the select board, and any modifications and, you know.
Just write it on, write it on.
Yeah, well, well, you know, we just did a bunch of ordinances, so, and they're very expensive.
It's hard to say between.
Did you speak to somebody at the DEP?
I, isn't it?
He said Colin, when.
Colin, yeah.
Yeah.
I spoke, I spoke to a bunch of people, I just can't know if this is, it's challenging to remember everybody's name.
Yeah.
He said, I wonder if that's something.
There is a stormwater guy, Colin, but he's, I mean, I don't think we'd be talking to him about.
No, I wonder if there's something, could we bounce it up, Jeff?
Yeah, I could, I could write him a email.
Jeff Callanich, who's the shoreline guru. I wonder if you just bounce it up to Jeff, just to see what he does.
That needs to ask him, maybe.
Yeah, because you said that he, Colin recommended you talk to him.
Jeff what?
Callan.
Callan?
Callanich.
Oh, okay.
Is that it? We got that?
I think so, unless you want to.
We're going to, we're going to come off the motion to adjourn.
Wanted to address some issue of correspondence, or has that been? That was his. That was his.
Okay.
Mr. Pearl.
So, they have, we scheduled the public hearing, which is in half tonight, obviously. And he's going to have to give notice, you know, back to the republic.
Yes.
Does he care for the republic's request?
Yes.
Unfortunately, that's.
There's next series of agreement before we get any money.
Right. And that's, if they, would you be willing to, if this ordinance or this subchapter, if they moved their building back for every foot that they went up, would that be any consideration to, it's obviously the safety of the shoreline?
You, you'd have to move it back for the waves, you'd have to get out of the 75, five foot setback.
You're in one of those very small lots right along the shore.
What does that pay for, we just asked? I'm trying to optimize where you, ultimately, the whole point of shoreline is to protect water. If, if they agree to, if they can go back three, three feet, it'd be a lot to go up three feet. That means it's protecting more of the shoreline, and I think that was the ultimate goal of, would the, would the board consider that?
It also approaches the road in the morning. And he said the subject is waiting.
Is, is there water for those lots?
That would be the greatest, a compromise of the greatest practical extent.
Is there water for that lot? How do they get their water?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, so I think.
I mean, he needs to provide more information, he wants to submit a formal application, but he's just trying to.
I'm just trying to figure out what you can do with it.
Yeah.
I just don't think you can.
You'd have to petition the town to change the ordinance.
You can still apply and try, but, I mean, they're just, they give.
Unless you find some language in the, hopefully you might find some language in the shoreline zoning that created an exception that allows you to do what you want. The normal, I mean, an exception in the flood plain zoning to the normal shoreline zoning.
That was like the one that was just adapted, or just the one of the town?
Something that says, in the flood plain zone, this ordinance supersedes town law, and you can have, this, this standard is opposed by the state. That's what you need. The more you talk to an attorney, and they give you guidance to say there's case law that says town can do this, that's the only, I think we can, but the research is kind of on you, unfortunately.
I understand.
Everybody, everybody down?
I think so.
Edit, motion to adjourn?
I think we're in time.
How can I?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.